Yes.
Here's the video right.
Okay, I decided to like everybody.
Well, it's a good idea.
Wait till.
Have fun.
Everybody will. The. Other one. All we.
Yes, sir.
You know. Off the door.
The. Good.
Hi, man.
I don't.
That's me. Come on, we're on the first. Good morning.
Ah.
Yeah, I got. They look at that.
Maybe, oh, I gotta ask. All the. We just want.
See, Tom.
Come on. Somebody. Blue bed sleep. So, last. Awesome, many. I love. Actually.
Oh, yeah. It's up.
But then he. Look, I can. Go.
Bring up some seats.
Well, that's. One chair.
So it's not the number of chairs, it's fire code.
Totally.
Hi there, how are you?
Can I take a, I guess it's open for any.
Yeah.
Yes. Well. And like there's so. Wow. That is. So. This.
We've been breathing.
Had on. Over him.
I think he's like. We're in.
Yeah.
We're getting.
Yeah.
We knew. It's. Got it more than.
Like, and then.
Yeah. There are rules.
Yeah.
So. Well, that's a. And yet, speaking here.
Yeah.
There was. Question.
Yeah.
Where's who?
I don't.
Oh, my goodness. Even asking. Well, that's. See if we turn out just tell. You can't make. And I'll tell her if you don't.
Sitting on a night. If you could. But that's the thing that they're on your next. That's a.
I think that we.
Yeah. Think people were downstairs. Speak, so they said when you say their names. Move to the next person, give them.
You were doing on deck.
Yeah.
Do we have that little agenda that I wanted to have? For. That I was gonna put in.
Hey, no. It's all right. It's the script. For reading. Resolution. No, I'm talking about.
Get a quote, Dean Billups.
No, not yet. Yeah, but we're spoken down on who's going to.
I'm not sure if he's even turned on or not. He's still the crowns are.
Put it in there.
Like so, see if it's. All right. It's probably.
There we are.
Okay. Yeah.
Is this gonna? Then we. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. I forgot when we supposed to.
Sure. Um. The policy, the new policy. Such. I've got. Here is. Often. When you mention.
Side. Here and in the back standing. Apparently, I've been noticed that we are in fire code violation. So if there is a spot downstairs, if you can, those individuals can go down there and sit and watch. If you're there to speak, I will make sure that your name is mentioned to be on deck so you can be ready to speak.
And they can watch.
And you, yeah, there is live stream down there. So I'd appreciate it. On both sides and in the back standing. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna call a meeting back to order, but first let's come out of closed session, be resolved as best of each board member's knowledge. Only public business matter lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and all such matters as were identified in the motion going to closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during. The closed session.
Agreed.
Yeah, second.
Second.
And you could have roll call.
In the children's book.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
And if we could. Mr. Martin, if I could have you lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ask you all to repeat with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the. States. And so you will. For which stands. One. And the baseball. Pro.
And if we may, just have a moment of silence here. Just for a couple of minutes. Thank you, and I hope you all did have a prayer. Let me go, we're gonna be going into. Our citizens' comment, let me just. Changing some things around. On this, one thing I'd like to do is I'm gonna mention your name. And I'll give you the the last letter. The first letter of last name, so pronounce your first name, but. Last letter. Or first letter, last name. And just give the magisterial district you're in. Nothing else. All right. Again. What I'll do is I pronounce your name. I'll also pronounce the other individual that's on deck. Again, name. And first letter of the last name. And if I can. If there's somebody else that is repeating the same thing, I ask that you. Decline in the speaking. If you only have about three minutes. For this. There'll be a certain amount of time that I'll say, we'll probably move on to some of the other agenda items. To go through some of the things that we have. If there's too many to speak. We will continue them in the following meeting. So. The first one. That I have is Ronald H. Finn Castle District. On deck is Christine L. Amsterdam District. Again. Topic of Ronald H. is a Roanoke cement possible extension? Ben Castle.
I'm coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to, there's a. Microphone right there. Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
Get your breath, get, take your breath, get a breath there if you want to.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And again, you just have to, just.
I'm new here at this. So I really didn't know what. What to expect. Be honest, I'm, I'm taking to see this many people. In this county that wanna do something positive to help the county, but I do want to address. One concern I have. Several months ago. I saw. Core drilling equipment. On the Roanoke Cement property. That's closest to. The Andy Lane Trail and the old Potter Farm. Which, when I moved into the county, I was told that Potter Farm was bought as an insurance buffer. That they would never come that way to drill. The fact that I've seen core drilling equipment there tells me they may have other plans. I don't know this to be fact. But I do know. That when I moved out there. I met the vice president's wife. This lady was picking up garbage along the Toba Road, and before I bought my house, I stopped and I talked to her. And she told me at that time that her husband had been brought in from Indiana. He was the vice president of that company. And she told me that I would never have to worry about them coming in my direction. Which is heading from Tinker Cliffs, Andy Lane Trail, towards McAfee's Knob. That's where I saw that core drilling equipment. Now, you don't bring that kind of equipment out there. Just for the heck of it. If they're gonna move that way, I have serious concerns. Because the fact that I have read where they have done business. And where they're digging now, there's a gentleman, I don't do Facebook anymore, but from what I'm being told by my wife, does Facebook. They had a gentleman over there, the Q cattle, the Q cattle company has had problems with his property due to their business. Now, I understand they're a very big business. They offer a lot of jobs. I've read up on them, they've spent an enormous amount of money to project a very positive environmental. Face about their business, okay? And, and they may be. I don't know, but I have had several neighbors tell me that neighbors whose connecting property have received letters to come in to meetings to discuss these plans. Well, when you start talking about moving that dig hole. Around the corner from behind that mountain. Trust me, the wind blows right down the valley and heads right this way. Now. I personally, I'm concerned about noise. If they are to start drilling out there, I don't wanna hear tink, 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 tink all night from a rock breaker that you can hear at McAfee's Knob or Tinker Cliffs. A whole lot closer, so I have concerns about that. I don't know if anything's been said about that, I don't know what can be done about it. Okay, but I am very interested to to find out exactly what's going on. And what the environmental impact is gonna be to what I would think would be one of Bata Tot's. Prime. Areas to say, hey, this is part of us, and that's our part of the Virginia Triple Crown, speaking of Tinker Cliffs. Appalachian Trail going through there. I, I would think they would wanna maybe protect that a little bit more, or find out what's gonna be gone, going on, on down the road before it's too late. After the ball gets rolling to do something positive. That's my concern.
Thank you very much, Ronald, appreciate.
You're welcome.
Christine L. Amsterdam on deck is Terry B. Valley.
Good evening. I address this to our Board of Supervisors, the Deputy County Administrator, the Library Director, and the County Attorney. I would like to take just a moment to clarify some misconceptions. You were wrong when you implied that these books are popular because of frequent checkouts, and I'm referring to the sexually explicit and obscene. And perverse books for children and teenagers in our library. As we stated before, people are also checking these books out to get them off the shelves and away from children. Your supporters falsely accuse us of hating the LGBT two Q demographic. We do not hate them at all. The National Organization Gays Against Grooming recognizes this child exploitation and stands up against it. Your supporters falsely accused us of being, quote, "book-burning Nazis." Slander, under the law, as I understand it, is illegal. May we remind you yet again that the American Library Association President Emily Durbinsky proudly declared herself a Marxist Communist. The one who influences our public libraries. Your supporters falsely claim that we're a bunch of right-wing Christians. In reality, the Christians, Jews, Muslims, atheists, and agnostic see this perversion for what it is and speak out against us. Against it. Your supporters complain the right to free speech is under attack. This is not true, and it's a smokescreen diversion from the real issue, which is setting community standards of decency for materials that are acceptable and accessible to children and teens. The library director said that since many of these books are catalogued from Roanoke County, they can't be removed except by Roanoke. However, our Lieutenant Governor Winston Earl Sears confirmed that you as board supervisors do make the rules that govern our county, and you can find a way to reject these harmful books. Amy White, at the June twenty-seventh meeting. You denied this problem, admonished your and the board's constituents, the one thousand three hundred county citizens. For calling out these sexually explicit and perverted books for the evil they are. And you proceeded to deflect by suggesting that we turn our focus away from this problem and get involved with community activities. Your comments were arrogant, dismissive, and disrespectful. You all said that you reviewed these books and found no problem with them. You didn't say which books that you reviewed, though. But enough of that. We appreciate your listening to the facts that we presented to you for seven months now. And we would like to thank you for that. So on behalf of all those who support the freedom to read. And these books coming from the reputable publishers that you buy from. The very books that we presented to you earlier, which include Gender Queer endorsed by the ALA that won the Alex Award Book for Teenagers, showing illustrations of youth having oral sex. Sex Uncensored, that informs teenagers how to engage in all methods of sex, including sexting, anal sex, and pornography. Making a Baby for Children shows a young boy in a shower with two naked men showing their genitals. The Everybody Book. The Everybody Book for Children, it shows children as young as age eight, illustrations of condoms for how to have sex. And a pregnant man. I'm Almost Finished. Rainbow Parade showing naked people, two men in bondage, holding hands, a naked man with balloons covering his genitals, all in a parade in front of children. And Be Yourself, that tells children they can be a different gender from how they were born, multiple genders or no gender. So on behalf of the Freedom to Read advocates of these books and your library director and your county attorney, we would like to present you with a gift of these books. These will be in the mail to your families direct from Amazon tomorrow.
So we have. Terry B. On deck is Ruth S. in Castle.
Hello, I'm Terry B. You asked us that to not repeat what was said before, everything that Christine just said, I am in one hundred percent agreeance. I do not understand why this county cannot. Remove this type of pornography in the schools and in the libraries when we have other states, Arkansas. You know, Governor Huckabee, she got rid of them, Oklahoma's gotten rid of them, Florida's gotten rid of them. I don't understand why Bata Tot can't get rid of them. Thank you.
So. Ruth S. Ruth S., next on deck is Vicki G. in Castle.
Our green church tell us who we are. I'm Ruth Sellers from the Finn Castle District. And I live on Road Eight Seventeen, which is a state road that is so much in the. Not the news, because nothing's ever been put out about the news about this trail that we're fighting. We have been. Going on through so many things for the past few months. And. It's getting to the point now where. We don't notice anything of superiors doing anything. To see our point of view. This thing started back twenty-three years ago. And bringing up old. Points of view back then. Perry Austin was the one that started this, and it's time we named names. We've got to get things back to the normal. And it's not gonna do it with now the. Cost of this trail amongst two others is up above thirty-five million dollars. And I know that all of you know that thirty-five million dollars is not easy to come by. Okay. So now we're talking about. A trail that involves. Vehicles as well as bicyclists, horsemen, we've gone through all this, we've gone through this so many times. Just to make a point. And it's gonna come out of all of our pockets, not just one. Everybody in this country is gonna end up paying more taxes. This kind of money can't be come from Bata Tot, from Craig, from Ally Gaining. It's gonna be countrywide. And it's gonna cost us a lot. There are big safety issues, so many, many things has been brought to all of our attention. The main thing that really strikes us odd is that. The news media has never been notified until just recently of anything going on. No reports, nothing comes out in the newspaper unless one of us. Make a point. To get someone to print what we'd like to say. And. We're just right back where we started as far as making people understand that this trail is a. Very difficult situation, not because I live on this state road that we're talking about. It's because of the big safety issue that people with vehicles and all this other on this road is very, very unsafe. So I just say again, God help us, this thing, if it goes through, it's going to be a bad thing. Thank you.
You. Vicki G. and on deck, this will be the last one to start some of the agenda items here, is Jim S. Fincastle.
Um, I'd like to speak in regards to the proposed Craig-Bodatah Trail. We have been labeled as the frenzied opposition. Supposedly, we are too worked up about the part of the proposed trail that serves as an emergency route out of Ariskenee. I, as an opponent, have said nothing more than what I have heard the V Doc Project Manager say on more than one occasion. There may be locked gates barring vehicles from that section of the trail. No, it is not a definite, and I have never claimed that it was. Yes, supposedly, the people of Ariskenee will have access to that portion of a trail in time, in times of flooding. That is, if the person in charge of the key is aware of the situation or can be found or brings it from wherever. I ask you, board members and public, would you want to rely on such an arrangement in times of emergency? No one is disrespecting the process of trail building. Again, I ask you and the public a question. Are you aware there are two public meetings in September to discuss the issue? One is in Newcastle and one in Eagle Rock. This information may not have appeared in the newspapers yet. Will you see it if it does? Not everyone reads the newspapers like they did 15 years ago. Therefore, I see the function of the opposition as one of informing. Would someone in Fincastle realize that as proposed, the trail will be on 11 miles of state roads with no separation from vehicle traffic? Would someone from Daleville realize that it may take emergency services an hour to get to an incident on the trail? How long does it take for an ambulance to get to Daleville? Does someone from Buchanan realize there is no cell phone service in Ariskenee or along most of the trail? Do the citizens of Bada Tot County realize that as citizens of Virginia, it is their tax dollars that would build a trail and for others in the state? Do they realize nobody can tell them who will pay to keep it maintained? These are concerns the average person needs to be made aware of when they hear trail and say, oh, wouldn't that be nice? So yes, let the process take place. This public discourse is part of the process. And I didn't realize there is a set timetable for such things. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim S.
Hello. Jim Statlander, Old Railroad, Eagle Rock. At first, when one hears the concept of this trail, they think, how bad can a trail be? Then we zero in on the details. Today, I want to comment on it in a more broad form. What is this trail? What's its driving force? Let's call it for what it is. It's a catalyst for tourism to bring more money. Technically, you can't say tourism is a business. It's not a singular thing like a restaurant. So tourism is more like an industry. This trail will go through a multitude of scenarios, but mostly in a bad way. Backyards, roads, right next to houses, and through farms. All of these areas are zoned rural, agricultural, or residential. It is why the people live there. You are wanting to expand an industry into an area where it never existed before. An industry that can only exist if a trail is created. It's not a restaurant they will come for. It's a trail. The trail is the focus item of the business, placed right in the middle of everyone's life. Every single buyer is out there using it. It is a sneaky way to get around rezoning an area to accommodate business. I've mulled this concept over many times. Is it a silly, half-baked notion? Recently, I came across information that the Bada Tot County had created. It's called the Bada Tot County Strategic Trail Plan. Did you catch that word? Strategic. Make no mistake, its purpose is for trails. In condensing what I found, there is a section about threats to trail planning. That's right, threats. Then, under that is listed zoning restrictions. Zoning restrictions are a threat to trails. And the county wants trails. Ouch, right there in print. The county sees one of the things that is, excuse me, the county sees one of the things that is to help protect us as a problem. The lives and property of everyone along this corridor will be changed by the way of this thinking. The county has a notion to do whatever it wants, whenever it wants. Don't tell the people what's going on, just do it. Whoops, cat's out of the bag, as the title in the paper said. How true that statement was. Indications are, you would have kept it in the bag a lot longer till more was done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, everybody had the opportunity to take a look at the consent agenda. Do I have a motion of approval?
I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Number five, Mr. Zarella. Approval of transfers and additional appropriations? I know Mr. Zarella's in the other room.
Yeah.
Apparently on his way. There he is right there. Gave you some exercise, Mrs. Zarella.
Good evening, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, for the month of July, there were three transfer requests. With the first two representing quarterly transfers. Transfer number three is a transfer of budgeted funds from the salary adjustments line that applies funding for compensation adjustments that were included in the FY24 budget and were effective 7/1/23. The transfer figure includes providing for associated fringe benefits. With respect to appropriation requests, there are five pass-through and two regular appropriations being requested. Pass-through items one through five represent exponential reimbursements, miscellaneous receipts, donations, and use of grant funds in discrete fund dollars. Appropriation item six brings the FY24 total budget for the required funding amount for the local health department. While item seven is for the purchase of temporary fencing for the Bada Tot Sports Complex. Respectfully requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Zarella?
Ms. Chairman, if there's no questions, I move for approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Zarella, approval of accounts payable or application.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, total spenders being requested for approval for, for July for the general fund, including debt service and all other funds is combined Payable disbursements of note for the month are as follows. Under fire in EMS, $118,174 paid to VFIS for annual insurance coverage for three policies. Also under fire in EMS, $54,535 paid to Burgland Chevrolet for a 2024 Chevy Silverado. Under Park and Rec, $38,400 paid to Benchmark Tools Supply for a motorized infield groomer and laser grader. Under regional organizations, $46,929 paid to Visit Virginia Blue Ridge for annual funding. This is payment 104. For regional organizations, $33,642 paid to Roanoke Valley Allegheny Commission for FY24 dues. Under regional organizations as well, $35,032 paid to Roanoke Regional Partnership, representing semi-annual support funds on the transfers to EDA. $81,500 paid to EDA of Bada Tot County to transfer the county portion of business expansion incentive funds to Altech Industries. Also, $87,500 paid to EDA of Bada Tot County to transfer the state portion of the business expansion incentive payment to Altech Industries. Also, under transfer to EDA, $40,400 paid to EDA of Bada Tot County to transfer the county retained portion of its broadband grant to the most networks. Under local health department, $98,192 to the Bada Tot County Health Department for the first quarterly operational support payment. Under CIP, a Cork of Court project, $69,632 paid to CoFile Technologies for a document digitizing project. Uh, these costs are covered by grant funds from the Library of Virginia. Finally, under YMCA, $300,000 paid to YMCA of Virginia's Blue Ridge for the county's year seven matching contribution. Are there any questions or comments related to the requested accounts payable expenditures for approval for the month of July?
Any questions? Mr. Zarella? If none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor? Mr. Zarella, thank you, and consideration of the supplemental appropriation resolution to fund projects not completed in FY23 in FY24.
Thanks, Chairman. Uh, this is a request for reappropriation of budgeted funds for the following. Number one, $173,800 for the repaving of the parking lot of the Greenfield Administration Facility. Number two, $157,880 for boiler repairs at the Public Safety Building. And finally, $8,200 for painting of the Regis Rose Facility. These are current projects that require funding in FY24 from the get-go. Staff recommends the reappropriation of these funds so that the projects can move forward and receive available funds in order to complete these projects on a timely basis. A resolution provided as documentation for the reappropriation request. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Mrs. Zarella?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, I'd move for approval.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Zarella. Sure. And next, if um we have a proclamation recognizing September 17th to 23rd, 2023 as a Constitution Week. Mr. Clinton?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to say that we have several guests here, and I don't see Ms. Holt yet, Betty Holt. There you are, too close up front. Uh, Ms. Holt is the, is the region of the Bada Tot Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, an organization we all know that helps preserve our rich cults or constitutional and historical heritage. And Ms. Holt has a proclamation she'd like to present to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Scott Horn, Mr. Clinton, Mr. Martin, Dr. Bailey, and Mrs. White. I would like to introduce several of our members who are present with me tonight. If they, they will just raise their hands. We have Kathy Austin, Angela Kuhn, Beth Pappas, Harriet Little, and Emily Talbot-Gio. For more than a century, the members of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, have dedicated themselves to historical preservation, promotion of education, and encouragement of patriotic endeavor. These goals are as relevant in today's society as they were when the organization was founded in 1890. On September the 17th, 1787, at Independence Hall in Philadelphia, 39 delegates at the Constitutional Convention signed the Constitution of the United States of America. These individuals spent four months creating and approving this document, which outlined a framework for the federal government of the new republic. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th to, through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August the 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the celebration are to, one, emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution; two, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life; and three, encourage the study of the historical events, which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Constitution Week is a great time for all of us to learn more about this important document and to celebrate the freedoms it has given us. We encourage the residents of Bada Tot County to fly their American flag between September 17th and September 23rd. And if I may read the proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Bada Tot County, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Bada Tot County Board of Supervisors recognizes September 17th to 23, 2023 as Constitution Week. I hope you will unanimously adopt this proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. That is, uh, as we all know, uh, the Constitution was a humanity-changing event. And um it came, you know, we often think about the Constitutional Convention itself and the, the luminaries who were there who sort of wrote the Constitution, but only sort of. It emanated from the people. And it's the supreme law of the land, and it has changed humanity in countless ways. So we appreciate what the Daughters of the Revolution are doing for this. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will be pleased to Mr. Chairman, I will be pleased to submit this proclamation for approval. I'll move for approval.
I'll second that. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you very much.
We had a public hearing at seven o'clock, and I let the guy that go that was supposed to be up front here, Mr. Zarella. We take that walk again. Mr. Zarella, I thought you'd get a little bit of fresh air before you come back in.
I got my steps in today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. There are several requests to amend the adopted budget for FY twenty-four. And due to the size of the amendments, a public hearing was required, and it had to be advertised. And that was advertised July nineteenth in the Finn Castle Herald. Do you all have your requests ready? They run items A through G. Item A, consideration of an amendment to the Bodatuck County twenty-four budget to appropriate remaining funds for the Circuit Courthouse renovation project in the amount of twenty-six million, seven twenty-two eighty. And that's the calculation of current proceeds balance less items that will be paid and charged to FY twenty-three for services provided by June thirtieth. So those are accrued items. The amount available includes interest. It was assisted by coverage of certain pre-construction costs paid by the County General Fund. The request represents six thirty-two-three proceed balance less cumulative invoices to be charged twenty-three as I previously mentioned. Item B, consideration of budget amendment to appropriate the remaining portion of the two primary installments of ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act funds received and a thirty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollars of funding received as an ARPA tourism grant. These funds transfer cash can be utilized for the current DHCD slash Botco slash Luma's broadband project and other strategic priorities. The tourism grant is a standalone ARPA grant. The the remaining portion eliminates approximately one point eight million dollars of reimbursed public safety wages and benefit expenditures for May and June two thousand twenty-three that will be transferred to the general fund at the end of July. Please stop me if you have any questions. Item C, consideration of budget amendment to appropriate carryover funds for firing EMS apparatus and equipment in the amount of one million, seven thirty-seven, nine thirty-seven. It represents one point four million dollars of firing EMS apparatus budgeted items that had accumulated for FY twenty-two, and then additional funding that was included in the FY twenty-three budget for an ambulance and a response vehicle rollover plan. The apparatus includes two tankers that were prepaid, the refurbishing of another tanker, supervisor pickup, and a medic unit ambulance. The size of the carryover requests are due to the extensive lead times on virtually every capital purchase that's being made. The prepaid items require an appropriation due to accounting practices as per our county auditors. Item D, consideration of a budget amendment to the Bodatuck County's FY twenty-four budget to appropriate carryover funds to transfer to EDA. And the appropriation, the appropriation is to provide the county's match to a Virginia Ready Site Program Grant. The grant is related to engineering due to diligence and construction of an access road and sewer utility to serve Lot Three. The one hundred and twenty-one acre site at Bodatuck, Bodatuck Center and Greenfield. After the advertisements, David Mormon and I sat with Ken McFadden, and we supplied an updated figure for consideration. Item E, consideration of budget amendment to appropriate funds included in several discrete funds, including shares funds, property seizure funds, and the Greenfield Preservation Fund. Total amount included in these discrete funds is eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, eight thirty-two ninety-seven. These funds are regularly appropriated at the beginning of each fiscal year. These are the balances that are as of six thirty. Item F, consideration of a budget amendment to appropriate carver funds to Assessor Department in the amount of four seventy-two, six thirty, which is the remaining balance of the FY twenty-two Assessor Budget after accruals carried over to FY twenty-four. Item G, consideration of an amendment to the FY twenty-four budget to provide an appropriation for funding of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two oh nine forty-one in the firing EMS Capital Reserve Fund. Again, that was the fund balance in that fund as of six thirty. Twenty-three, now, all these items that I'm mentioning, there's no new funding being requested. These are carryover balances that are being requested, and since we are having a public hearing to begin with, we added a few other items. As you might see, that we wouldn't necessarily do in July, but we felt there's there's going to be a lot of items going forward that we might have public hearings for, so I felt that there was a need to potentially put a couple of these items on here, so we can get these out of the way and make room for additional public hearings and potentially public hearings during the year. Total budget amendment, including for consideration regarding public hearing, is thirty-five million, six twenty-six, two sixty-one, forty-five. And as I mentioned, these items have already been approved in some form or fashion with respect to prior year budgets. With that, the recommendation is to have the public hearing, receive comments, and move forward with our recommendations for appropriations. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Zarella? If no questions, then I'll open it up to the public. Anybody here would like to speak upon this thirty-five million, three four seven eighty-one point four five? Is there a total proposed amendments to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four? None? I'm sorry? Yes, you can.
I just was wondering if there was any carryover money with VDOT for the county. Are we going to get any carryover money from last year into this year's budget?
I would have to see if that was included in the capital improvement plan for the end of the year. We had some money in the budget for FY twenty-three. I would have to go back and see if there's any remaining balance. I thought that project was complete, but I could take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Zarella.
Can I just make one more comment about the VDOT thing?
Yes, ma'am.
If we have extra money in that budget, Roanoke County down Hunt Ridge is a mess. VDOT says that they're going to pave it, but we have about a quarter of a mile of Bodatuck County on Hillview that connects to Hunt Ridge. My concern is that the Hillview part of the Bodatuck County is not going to be paved. If they're going to come out and bring all that equipment to do all of Hunt Ridge, I think that we should be able to at least get the section of Bodatuck County down to two twenty paved at the same time. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Terry B., what I would ask is also, VDOT's going to be speaking, and hopefully they'll be able to answer some of those questions. Some, that question at least.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And we have several of them that we need to go through and itemize here. And the first one goes as follows, appropriation for remaining proceeds for the Circuit Courthouse renovation in the amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred and twenty-two hundred eighty. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
B, an appropriation for ARPA funds in the amount of four million, six hundred and ninety-five, two forty-two point oh seven, appropriate as follows, for four million, six hundred and sixty-five, two hundred and forty-two point oh seven to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, Part One, expenses of two six one dash five zero zero two zero three zero, zero 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 and zero zero zero, and thirty thousand to the American Rescue Plan Act, which was my own tourism grant. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? None? All in favor? And C is an appropriation for firing EMS apparatus vehicles in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven, nine thirty-seven. Do I have a motion? So moved. I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
D, an appropriation for costs associated with business ready site expenses in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven to six hundred and fifty, transferred to EDA. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
E, an appropriation in the amount of eight hundred and forty-six, eight thirty-two point nine seven, broken down, as Mr. Zarella discussed. I make a motion for approval.
I'm out.
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Appropriation in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two, six thirty, to Assessor, broken down as follows, four hundred and seventy-one, six thirty, to Assessor Rational Services, and one thousand to Assessor Office Supplies. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And appropriation of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and nine forty-one to Fire EMS Capital Reserve Fund. I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Zarella, I don't think you're on the docket to speak again, so you're free to get some air.
More steps.
We do have a, if you pardon, we do have a walk-on item that was given to you having to do with the school.
So there is more.
Yes.
This is a consideration request of School Division to utilize School Capital Reserve Fund in excess of threshold of approval amounts. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Bodatuck County Administrator received a letter dated July sixth from Brandon Lee, School Director of Finance. The subject of the letter referred to a request for the School Division to utilize six hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars from the school's capital reserve funds to purchase six school buses in order to work towards the Bodatuck County Public Schools Capital Improvement Plan. Since the County Administrator's approval threshold for utilization of the School Capital Reserve Fund is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the request for approval for using the six forty-three, eight fifty-four is being brought to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. The request letter sent by Mr. Lee is attached to this agenda item. Please note that the School Division has these funds in hand. These aren't additional funds. I spoke to Dr. Russ upstairs. He asked if we needed to be here for this, and I thought it was fairly straightforward, so I released him. But in any rate, therefore, the recommendation is, as stated in the agenda item, recommendation to approve the use of the School Capital Reserve Fund for six school buses in the amount of six forty-three, eight fifty-four. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Row? If none, do I have a motion for approval to the School Capital Refund, Refund Sir, Funds?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other additional items to the agenda?
Yeah, just the hundred green development.
Go get some fresh air.
That was last month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to the citizens' comments. Thank you for your patience. One of the things I did receive here is some of the people I'd like to bring forward, Molly Odell, beg on it, Molly O., Evelyn T., and Alex S. If you, if Molly O. could come forward. First, Evelyn T. on deck, and Alex S. soon after. There is a microphone right there, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chairman and board members, thank you all for your work. It's, I know what it's like. I just want to applaud your board, the board's decision to allow all people, young and old, to see themselves reflected in our library books. I support the idea that parents make decisions for what their children read, but not other parents' children's. I'm excited to see the new ways libraries in Bodatuck are engaging citizens, like the Stars Activity at the Y and the Plan for Outdoor Equipment Checkout at the Buchanan Library. Limiting library book offerings do not protect anyone from life's complex and challenging issues, and I appreciate your understanding of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn T.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. As a mother of two, I want to affirm my belief in the dignity of all children, and I, as a parent, want to teach my children what makes sense to me, and for other parents to have the freedom to do the same. I believe that parents should do their job and librarians should do theirs. I appreciate that some parents think they know what's best for all of our children, but I believe that parents should parent and librarians stock shelves. Thank you for your support.
Alex S. and Marty J. from Finn Castle on deck.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Hey, Edward. You got the comfy seat, man. You must've gotten here early. Pardon me, board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My daughter got her library card on her fourth birthday. She was extremely excited. We went into the Finn Castle branch. She had just learned to write her name semi-legibly, and every librarian that we've ever dealt with there has been wonderful and helpful and thoughtful. has engaged with us directly and done their best to make sure that we had access to what we needed to access to help me further my daughter's education. I, uh, was very shocked to hear about the campaign to try to assert some kind of moralistic control over our county's library. I think we have excellent library professionals to rely upon, and I think it's an unconscionable attempt to misuse representational democracy to try to assert your own moral sense of propriety onto what other people have access to. Freedom of speech is most important for the most controversial pieces of speech and for people to try to use, uh, out of context, shocking examples of things that they know will be uh, clickbait on the internet in order to mobilize this whole web of political activity against the people that I know to be deeply and effectively dedicated to my family's well-being has been appalling. And I think that you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, lady and gentlemen of the board, excuse me, I think it's incumbent on you to scrupulously resist any attempt to appropriate representative democracy to abridge or restrict access to free speech. That's why I think above all, this is a First Amendment issue, contrary to the bad faith arguments that we may have heard elsewhere tonight. And I hope that you will have the courage of the conviction to stand up for free speech and free access to free speech here in Bodatot County. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck, Charles R. Finn Castle.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Marty Jenkins. I'm in the Finn Castle District. I believe last month that Vicki Graham gave you a picture and asked you if you could see the van. For those of you that didn't see that picture, it was a van in front of another car that wasn't visible because of extreme dust on Route 817. Since vehicular traffic is allowed on this section of the trail, VDOT will be leaving this road as it is with large loose gravel and lots of dust. You are being misled. This section is not going to be your typical rail, trail bed. Along with your spandex, fancy bikes and running shoes, there are two more necessary things to add to your attire. A good respirator. And a pair of goggles. Please enjoy your walk and your ride.
That was good. Charles R. on deck, Jackie L.
Just a suggestion, if you have a large crowd with this many speakers, you might want to reserve a section for the speakers that you know will be coming to, um, not have the perception that you don't want to hear from citizens. I'm Charles Rule and I'm from Finn Castle. What I was going to do was quote from a sexually explicit book for 13 and up. I see that there's some teens here, so I'm not going to do that. You can get a library card at any age. Now, if I'm five years old, I get a library card. Then when I'm 13, I can set up my online account. Um, I can see what's available in local libraries. And it's interesting, too, the default setting is to not show my history of books that I have checked out. But I noticed now we have eBooks available and one, the book I was going to read from is called All Boys Aren't Blue. And it's in the Finn Castle Library, but I don't need to go. I can just, uh, read it from my phone. I can pull it up on the computer and the digital version is, uh, right there for me. It describes the excerpt I was going to describe. Um, if you go to our website, we are brace.org and go to the books, you can see the excerpt from All Boys Aren't Blue. But it's quite disturbing. It describes first-time anal sex and how wonderful it is, um, and uh, how glorious it was. And again, this is for 13 and over. And if I'm not interested, or if I am interested in or enjoy anal sex, the language is clearly sexually exciting, and that is the definition of pornography. Thank you.
Um, Jackie L. Jackie L. And on deck is Lindsay N. Amsterdam. Jackie L. Travel. On deck is Lindsay N.
Good evening, Jackie. Lynn here. On July 17th, the county attorney Lockaby gave his opinion about the library problem. I, we have sent a letter detailing all the reasons why he's incorrect. Tonight, I'd just like to highlight a couple of them or a few of them. One of the points was that the library board does not have the authority to act or does have the, um, he claims the library board is in charge. It's actually you who are in charge. He cites a case, a Supreme Court case that was not even about obscenity. He cites the Miller case, which was lost. The Supreme Court said that obscenity is not protected speech. He suggests that parents should sue publishers, which is a ridiculous idea because it would drag in a whole other party. We can settle this right here. The law is basically on the parent's side. Congress specifically has passed laws in the past protecting children from obscenity on the internet. The Supreme Court upheld this. The basically libraries around the country are successful in cleaning up or keeping clean the libraries without worry about the legal consequences. He basically said that we should let the professionals alone. They're not experts about children. What they know is how to differentiate between the Library of Congress and the Dewey Decimal System. They are not in charge of education, education for children. They work for us. They need to do what we want. So basically, bottom line, you should not be living in fear of some letter from the ALA or ACLU saying that there's going to be a lawsuit. This is just a typical tactic that is done. There are no cases they can cite, which they have won. And Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears, among others, say that you do have the authority to act. And you have 1,300 petitioners on your side who will back what you do. We would like you to stand up and take action to clean up the libraries and fix this. We have various ideas. Let's stop the cat and mouse game and simply get on with solving the problem. We can do this. Courage. Thank you.
Lindsay N.
I agree that we should get on with solving problems. I think there are lots more serious problems that we should be solving than telling librarians how to do their jobs. I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in here today. I appreciate the work that you all do for our county. Thank you. The board has done more than its due diligence by hearing comments and entertaining complaints about this library system issue for six months at least. For those who were not at the July 17th meeting, County Attorney Lockaby presented factual information about legal precedent for removing books from libraries. I trust Attorney Lockaby's information and I trust the law. Um, I'm not gonna go over the comments that he made in full because I want to spare everybody, but I would like to say that he explained that in legal cases where books were removed from libraries, the law was not on the side of censorship, and these legal battles can cost taxpayers a lot of money, a lot more than the less than one penny we're paying to keep these LGBTQ plus books in our libraries where they belong. He said, quote, "If the libraries ultimately removed any of these books, I would have very strong concerns that the attempt would be a total failure." He told the board, "There's no getting around the fact that much of the public outcry about these books is motivated by disagreement with the viewpoints." "I've been visiting public libraries and benefiting from their resources since I was a tiny child, when my mother took me to the library once a week to check out a stack of books. I went on to earn a degree in English and I've been a professional communicator for 25 years. I value public libraries for the wide range of materials they provide, not just the materials that echo my own opinions. I support citizens' right to access materials that interest them, and I'm strongly opposed to efforts to curtail my freedom and the freedom of others to access a variety of materials, even those that might offend someone else. It's time to put this question to rest, time to vote in favor of the position that librarians should be trusted to do their jobs, time to tell parents that it's up to them to help their children choose appropriate materials, time to move on from this and spend our time working on other issues that impact this community. Thank you."
That being said, if we can go to number nine. Discussion of Board Statement Regarding My Very Concerns. Mr. Mormon. I don't know if he's gonna come down here. Although I do have a couple of comments. I don't know if, uh, you remember when I ran, as well as Billy, and we put in the Finn Castle Herald, possible policy that we'd like to bring forward. I would like to bring that policy forward, um, and move this to the Library Board for consideration, uh, being that there's any, no opposition from the board members. But let me try to read this to you. If that's all right, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
On the Board, Bodatot County Library welcomes patrons of all ages to use its public facilities in a manner consistent with the Library Code of Conduct. Children left unattended may become anxious, restless, or disruptive, and they may encounter situations or hazard which put them at risk. Their safety is a serious concern for Library Board trustees and employees. The many responsibilities of library employees preclude monitoring each child's location, safety, or behavior. And library employees cannot accept caregiving responsibly for patrons of any age. Parents or persons acting in local apprentice are fully responsible for their minor under the age of 18 children charged at all times, and at all times are expected, one, to comply with the library policy rules, and two, to be responsible for seeing that their minor children do likewise. Any patron whose behavior is disruptive or any way violates the Library Code of Conduct may be reported to the Bodatot County Sheriff's Department with or without warning or notice. Children under the age of 18 must be accompanied by a parent or an adult age 18 or over, person acting in local apprentice. Children aged 16 to 17 with written notion, with written permission of a parent of acting in local may also, may be in the library without additional supervision. The parent or person acting in local accepts full responsibility of the children's behaviors, safety, and access to only the age-appropriate content, including being in the immediate vicinity of any visual contact with the child when needed to ensure the appropriate safety, uh, safety behavior and/or to the request of library employees. Notwithstanding foregoing or any other policy provision, therefore, thereof, library employees may report to appropriate management, law enforcement, public health, or other authorities in any circumstance of behavior or conduct that in a reasonable judgment may constitute a threat, danger, or risk to themselves, the public, the library property, or any individual on the library property. Additionally, the library shall maintain a complete listing of books of other publication and materials deemed to contain sexual assault materials, photographs, or descriptions, of which such may be available review of parents of a minor child, minor child, or person standing in local apprentice of minor children. Such materials we made available to children under the age of 18 only upon written permission of the parents of said minor child or person acting in local presence for said minor child. Such written permissions shall be kept on file by the library until the child reaches the age 18 or under the permission is resented, rescinded in writing by the parent or person acting in local presence for said minor child. This will be sent to the Library Board for consideration. I hope, um, if there's any opposition, be happy to speak about it. Other than that, I will send this on to the Library Board for their consideration. Now, one of the other things that we were gonna go over was the resolution in the support of the Protection of Citizens, First Amendment, and parental rights in Bodatot County libraries. Supervisor Martin, if you will start.
Whereas a public library provides a broad variety of materials, subjects, and viewpoints that enables citizens of all demographics to better understand and navigate a complex world. And whereas the freedom to read and access information is protected by the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, and whereas the public library is a uniquely American institution established to support and protect the free flow of information and ideas vital to a strong, functioning, democratic republic. And whereas the Bodatot County Library operates under collection development policies that include procedures and guidelines for the selection and de-selection of material considering the diverse needs and expectations of citizens in the Bodatot County community. And whereas these established policies and procedures provide clear means for individuals to request reconsideration of library materials with processes to ensure that the best interests of the entire community are considered when evaluating library content. And whereas the Bodatot County Library staff includes people with advanced degrees, all of whom receive extensive professional training, making them uniquely qualified to develop collections based not on librarians' personal preferences or benefits, but rather designed to meet the broad and varied interests and needs of their communities. And whereas the library staff take active measures to ensure that no obscene materials as defined by Section 18.2-372 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, and the case Miller v. California 413 U.S. 15, 1973, are introduced into the Bodatot County Library collection. Whereas the library purchases only from reputable vendors that are legally restricted from selling and distributing materials determined by the state and federal law to be obscene. And
Whereas the Bodatot County Library does not impose value judgment about materials and therefore does not segregate rate, label, or otherwise indicate approval or disapproval of contents or inhibit access to materials. And whereas materials requested from other library systems through the Roanoke Valley Libraries Consortium or interlibrary loan are delivered privately to individual requesters. And whereas the Bodatot County Library's youth collections contain content that has been identified by publishers and reviewers as intended and appropriate for these audiences and that the library provides these materials for a broad variety of families with differing needs and values. And whereas all Bodatot County Library materials may be found in the library's online catalog, ensuring full collection transparency and the ability to preview titles for suitability. And
Whereas Bodatot County Library staff and librarians are available to assist patrons in locating materials that suit their personal preferences and values without bias. And whereas the Bodatot County Library requires that all children under age 18 must be accompanied by a responsible adult aged 18 or older.
be accompanied by a responsible adult aged eighteen or older while in the library facility. And whereas said adult is responsible for all the child's activities in and access to library spaces, resources, services, and events. And whereas no child under the age of eighteen may obtain a library card without parental or legal guardian approval, and parents or legal guardians have full access to and control of their child's library account until they turn eighteen. And...
Whereas parents and legal guardians are guaranteed the right for the First Amendment to determine what their own child may read or access, but do not have the right to determine what all children may read or access, or dictate what other parents may allow their children to read or access. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board, the Bodatot County Board of Supervisors.
Actively supports and defends citizens' First Amendment rights, including the right to read and access information freely and to form their own opinions.
Defends parental rights to choose content that is suitable for their own families and children, but not to determine what is appropriate for other families and their children.
Affirms the Bodatot County Library's existing practices to protect minors by providing for collection transparency and parental slash guardian access and control in minors' use of library materials, services, resources, and events.
And supports the Bodatot County Library's existing policies and procedures guiding the selection and deselection of materials reflecting the needs and interests of the community, without discrimination against or preference to specific individuals, groups, or viewpoints. And...
Reforms the Bodatot County Library's vital role in protecting citizens' constitutionally and parental rights, enabling all citizens to understand and navigate a complex, a complex world. Adopted this 31st day of July, 2023. Well, okay. Thank you. Ms. White, if we may, um, update from Mallory, White President of the Bodatot Farmers Market. Oh, we do need a motion for this, if I can.
Hang on, hang on a second, Mallory.
I'm looking for approval of that resolution.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're all voted out next time.
Okay, Ms. White. Sorry about that.
So, we're gonna, um, turn our attention to, uh, ongoing Bodatot County project, uh, not a county project, but a lot of citizens of the county are working together on this project, and I am happy to introduce Mallory White, Dr. Mallory White, who is the President of the Bodatot County Farmers Market Board. And she has some rather exciting news, and her, um, attendance here tonight is, uh, very, very timely. If you have a copy of the Roanoke Times from Sunday, you probably noticed some very exciting news. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Mallory, and I hope you all will be patient for a moment and listen to the good work that this group is doing.
All right, uh, good evening. Thank you, uh, Mr. Quentin, Ms. White, Dr. Scott Horn, Dr. Bailey, and Mr. Martin for having me here. I introduced myself last year, so I'm not gonna do that again. I am the current President of the Bodatot Farmers Market, and I would like to talk about our 10th year that we've had at the Daleville Town Center. So, um, I'm gonna talk about three different kind of chunks today. I'd like to talk about some challenges that we've had and the adaptability that we've had. I would like to talk about the fun stuff, the growth and statistics of the Farmers Market this year. I would like to close out with some things that we're just counting our blessings, um, this year that we're happy about. So, um, as you know, we had a lot of turnover, well, you may not know, we've had a lot of turnover in our board this year. Um, but overall, everybody that's on the board now is either a vendor themselves, a owner of a small business, or works at a small business in this county. So, the Board of the Bodatot Farmers Market really is made up of people who live here and love local agriculture. Um, some of the challenges that have been...
Hold on, just a second. If somebody could close those doors up there, that'd be fantastic. Can we have one door open? Okay.
Leave that door.
Yeah, close that one and leave that one open. I am sorry.
Okay.
John, if you'll leave that one open.
Leave that door open, please.
And close this one up here to the left. Leave that one open. We can leave one door open, that one's closed.
Back to the market.
Okeydoke. Um, anyways, everyone that's on the board right now for the Bodatot Farmers Market lives in this area and really cares a lot about local agriculture. One of the biggest challenges that you've probably seen that has been on, pretty much on the forefront of everybody's mind, is the construction at the Daleville Town Center that has posed unique challenges this year. Uh, we've had to move locations a little bit, um, but I'm really proud to announce that all of our vendors are highly adaptable, and the Daleville Town Center is extremely wonderful to work with. We're in communication with the Daleville Town Center multiple times a week to kind of figure out what's going on, and they work with us, and they are very good to work with, and we're very happy that we're at the Daleville Town Center, honestly. So, the vendors are happy to stay there, and they've been great this year. Another challenge that we have faced has been a lot of misinformation. I think a lot of organizations are facing information campaigns right now. Um, and some of the ways that we've been able to address that is to try to increase transparency both on social media and on our website. Um, if you go to our website, you'll see About Us and Facts page with Frequently Asked Questions, questions that we get over and over again, and some answers to that. So, if you get a chance to check that out, I encourage you to go to our website and look at our Frequently Asked Questions page and the answers to those if you want to know anything about it, and you also know where I am. Um, another, another big challenge for us has been our festivals. I think you guys are familiar with our, our Tomato Festival. Uh, we had a Flower Festival this year, and we have our Honey Festival coming up next month. Um, we have chosen, we chose last year to get a new location for that because of the construction at the town center. We wanted to make sure we could hold the festival. So, uh, the town of Buchanan has been very generous to let us set out at the, the town park there, and we have been very pleased with the attendance. So, we estimate that we had about 3,000 people at the Tomato Festival on Saturday, um, compared to last year. I think we had about 4,000, but we also had the Oscar Mayer Wienermobile last year, so that probably was a little bit biased, drew some extra crowds. But we're, we've been very pleased with, uh, both Buchanan and the Daleville Town Center this year. So, some fun stuff, some growth and statistics. I'll go over customer numbers. We are currently down about six, 700 people right now compared to last year, which I don't think is a big deal at all. Uh, we've had a total of 10,900 people come through our market so far this summer. Vendors, last year we had an average of 22. This year, we're actually up, we have an average of 24 vendors each Saturday. And then last, sales, la, this time last year, we were averaging, we had, uh, $91,000 in total vendor sales, and this year we have a total of 111,000. So, that is up $20,000 this year compared to last year. So, we're very pleasantly surprised by that, even though it's down just a little bit in numbers. Um, so, counting our blessings is last. I would, uh, I would just like to thank the, the current Board members that we have. I would like to thank the Daleville Town Center, if you know anyone on the Daleville Town Center. Uh, I want them to know that we appreciate all that they've done for us in allowing us to set up there. We have a great relationship with community partners, community members. There's a list of those community partners on our website, and, um, if you didn't see, we did finally make the front page of the Roanoke Times with the Tomato Festival, a really wonderful article, so... Big thanks for that. And, um, you know, if you wanna come to the happiest place on earth on Saturday mornings, come to the Bodatot Farmers Market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hang on, Mallory. Hang on, Mallory. See if anybody has questions. I just wanna, uh, point out also, uh, Board Member Emily Bailey is in the room. Thank you, Emily. And I noticed some customers as well, and, and thank you all for your ongoing support of this effort. Does anyone have questions for Mallory about the project?
I do, Ms. White. Um, the $20,000 increase in sales over 91,000, that's percentage-wise, that's pretty significant, really.
Yes, sir.
You, do you know anything to attribute that to, as to different types of vendors or...
We do have two additional vendors on average each Saturday, and I know personally I'm doing a lot more marketing.
Thank you.
Okay, so the question was, there's a lot of construction going on at the Daleville Town Center. Um, what happens if all the parcels get sold, and where are we going to go? Um, right now, the Daleville Town Center does want us to stay there, and that's about as far as I know on that.
And, and somebody thinks about that question every single day?
Yes.
So, it's, 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 we don't have answers, but yeah, it's, it's front of mind. Absolutely. Thank you, Mallory.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Number 12, update on 4H programs. Tyler Payne.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Tyler Painter, I'm the 4H Youth Extension Agent here in the county, and, um, just like to provide you all with an update. I did bring a friend with me, but I'm gonna hold you all in suspense for just a second. I will introduce him in just a second. Um, but just wanted to give you all an idea of what's been going on within Bodatot 4H since the last time I spoke with you. So, uh, with the conclusion of the school year, we wrapped up a busy, busy, busy school year, which saw us in 30, um, elementary classrooms per month from October to April. We were also active within the middle and high schools with various projects, and this year something new that we started with a couple of the elementary schools was incubating eggs for embryology. So, the, that went over really well. We've already had a lot of requests to do embryology projects next year. Those fit in with a lot of the different, uh, lessons with fourth and fifth grade. So, I estimated that with all the kids that we worked with in the schools last year, it was about 1,200 students that, that, uh, got to participate in 4H programs across the, um, the elementary, middle, and high schools. Um, as you can see, we've got a ton of different 4H clubs. Um, all of our clubs remain active through the summer, uh, some a little bit more than others, it's just the kind of nature of the beast with, uh, different types of, uh, vacations and other activities going on. But, um, we've had a couple of clubs that have been participating in competitions, various camps, monthly meetings. Um, right now, all of our clubs are gearing up for the fair next weekend. Shameless plug for the fair, if you're in town, be sure to stop by Buchanan next weekend. Um, we will be set up with our, our 4H clubs. We'll also have a poultry and various livestock shows happening, uh, throughout the weekend, so if you're in the area, please come out. We also auction off some of our poultry chain chicks, as well as, um, some livestock animals on, on that Sunday. So, all supporting, uh, 4H youth. So, 4H Camp was a huge success. We went to camp on June 12th through the 16th, and, um, we had approximately 123 people, if you, uh, tally in our teens, adults, and campers. And, uh, Mr. LaRue actually came and, and visited us that day. He got to partake in the 4H Camp delicacy of Taco Salad Day, uh, which we, we appreciated the visit and, uh, the conversations that we were able to have. So, um, and that being said, right now, we're, we're gearing up for the next school year. It's hard to believe that it starts in just a few days. So, uh, we'll, we'll look to really start ramping up our programs probably late September, early October, and we're ready for, again, another busy year. But enough for me. Um, the young man that I brought this evening, this is Mr. Brian Jones. Brian is an active member, and he's been in several of our clubs, currently pretty active in our horse club, but Brian also went to camp with us, so I'd like for him to share some of his experiences with you guys.
Uh, hello, my name is Brian Jones, and, um, I am in the, uh, horse riding club. Um, so what we do in the horse club is that we, um... Uh, we do things like, uh, hippology, and, um, those are like, uh, like horse, like, um, normal horse, uh, stuff. Um, like colors and their bones and... Yeah, equipment and all that stuff.
Just tell them about 4H Camp. What do you do at campus?
Uh, so, um... Um, there are different types of classes in 4H Camp. Uh, there are a lot of classes, like, uh... Like riflery and archery and canoeing, uh, wilderness survival, um... Uh, and there's things like epic explosions.
Brian, hold on, just a second. Explosions, tell us more about these explosions. So, epic explosion, I wanna know more. If you just look at me and tell me more about these explosions.
Um, so, uh, you do things like, um, rockets and, uh...
Oh.
Yeah.
And then they, they go up so far and then they blow up then? Okay. So, safety, how about rifle? Did you enjoy the rifle?
Um, yes.
Okay. Can you, can I ask you, I'm gonna, I apologize, taking this a little bit different term, but if, go back to the horses. So, when you're talking about the horses, do you learn about the anatomy of the horse as well?
Uh, yes.
So, the structures and how you take care of the horses?
Uh, yes.
And you do clean up after these horses?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, anything else you can tell me about the horses that you enjoy?
Um, uh, well, there's also, um, different types of riding horses. We don't really do that in the 4H, well, actually, no, we do.
Huh?
Um, and, uh, there is a show coming up, it's, uh, states. Um, yeah, uh, and there are different types of horse riding and, uh...
Do you ride?
I do.
What, what style do you ride?
Huh?
What style do you ride?
Uh, I ride in hunter jumper.
Oh, so you do, you've done some courses?
Um, yes.
Wow.
Have you been to competitions already this summer?
Uh, yes.
Where?
Um, I went to Lexington recently.
To the Horse Center?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tell me about your horse, what horse do you ride?
Uh, I ride a horse named, uh, Sketch. He is a, uh, um, he's a paint and, uh, well, he doesn't have the greatest legs. Uh, but he's still a lot of fun to ride.
Wonderful.
Great.
Do you wanna tell them about the event next, or coming up Friday?
Um... Uh, there's another thing that horse clo, that the, uh, horse club does, and, um, there's one going on this Friday where, um, w, we are going to, it's like a camp where we bring in, uh, other kids who've never been around horses, and, um, we show them how to groom the horse, how to ride the horse, um, different parts of the horse, uh, different things to clean the horse with, different things to clean tack with, different pieces...
Do you have the horse at your house, or do you board it at a barn?
Um, I lease a horse.
Oh, great. So, how many days a week do you see it?
Uh, three, well, I ride him three days.
You ride him three days? That's fantastic.
That's awesome.
That's a lot, that's a lot of work. I have one more question. How was the taco salad?
Oh, it was pretty good.
Was it all right? That's the day we should come? So, Gary, how was the taco salad? Wonderful. Wonderful.
Brian, I know this is difficult coming up here and speaking to all of us, but I really appreciate you standing up in front of us and taking the courage to do so.
Thank you so much. Keep up that great work. We're proud of you. Thank you so much. Keep up that great work. We're proud of you.
And I just want to add one thing. This, uh, this camp that they're doing Friday, our horse club members will be doing most of the teaching. So it is for kids that, that have little to no experience with horses and they're actually going to be learning from our, our horse club members. And so Brian's going to have a role in that, getting to teach and relay some of the knowledge that he's already has. But obviously it will be under the trained supervision of professionals. But yes, most of our, our students will be doing the teaching. So we're excited about that. Thank you all so much.
Tyler, thank you for your work.
Great job. Brian, thank you. Let's go back if we can to more of the comments. I have Jim L. Undecked. On deck here if we can is Rhonda W.
I'm Jim L. I guess it appears that this is a done deal now. You folks have made your, made a vote, taken a vote. And, but I don't think it is. We're not going to go away. We are concerned parents and grandparents. These are our children. This is our county. This is where we live. We're going to continue to fight this. And I want to leave you with a question. Don't you think it's kind of disgusting that a child has to be 18 years old to go into library, library without an adult accompanying him? I mean, they can go to movies, including NC-17, the raunchiest stuff that Hollywood makes, which is pretty bad. And they can't go to the public library. This is typical of government to allow all kinds of vulgar stuff and then regulate who can go see it. That's ridiculous. So I just want to promise you, and I'm not, it's not a threat, and it's just a promise that we're not done. We're not done taking care of our kids. Now, I was going to make a big speech about the Miller case. And since that's already been covered pretty thoroughly, I do want to say something that's been missing from all of our discussions over the past couple of months about the Miller case. And that is that it imposed a contemporary community standard that hasn't been mentioned. And the, the Justice, Justice Berger, in his opinion, said that that was a compromise that they put in there to allow a significant degree of latitude for the publication of erotic expression, but also acknowledge regional differences in public tastes and sensitivities. So they did that so that if you're living in downtown San Francisco or Las Vegas or West Hollywood, California, which is a little city by, run by and occupied by homosexuals almost 100%. Then they can have their own community standards. But this is Bodata, Bodata, Virginia, not California. And we have different standards here. And the, the Miller decision, Miller test, they call it now, allowed for that. So I just want you to hear that, know that, and know that we'll be back to talk with you again. Thank you.
On deck is Steve V. Rhonda.
I am Rhonda W. Finn Castle, Virginia. I don't have a whole lot of fancy legal stuff to throw out at you guys today, but I do have a couple of questions. I think y'all kind of took a easy way out of this situation instead of looking at, this has been about the children. Not us, the children. I grew up here and I am ashamed to say that I have seen old white women pitted against old white women and white haired men. You know, it's like we just toss the children to the side. There's a book that I have a concern about that's in the libraries where you can tell an eight-year-old that there's other types of sex that can involve the mouth, the penis, the mouth, the vulva, the penis and the anus. I understand there's a couple of doctors on the board here. Dr. Scott Thorn, I think that you probably know the human body pretty well. In this book, we have a picture that shows that we want our children, and I don't care if you're gay, straight, or if you have sex from a chandelier. I don't think that we should have a book that tells our children that a man can get pregnant and it's a lie. Because this picture is a woman who's going to have a baby that took testosterone. That's why she has the beard. So if we're going to put it out to our kids, tell them the truth. Stop all this petty stuff of my right for this and my right for that. Just tell the truth. I grew up here. I'm an old country girl. I know how a pig has babies. Dr. Scott Thorn, one thing I'd like to ask you, and this is not to be disrespectful. But you're a doctor, you help people see. So let's see if you can see this clearly. Have you ever, have you ever seen a baby birth through the head of a penis? If you ever have, I'd like to meet him. And Dr. Bailey, if there's a book written in the library that tells our children that a male dog can have puppies, will that be all right? So that kid one day will come when they got a little male dog expecting that male dog to shoot them out some puppies. It ain't going to happen. So we better wake up and start thinking about what it is we're doing to our children. And one other quick note, I have friends that run a group that runs safe houses for children who have been sexually abused. And let me tell you what, in this society today, all we have is that trigger stuff. This will trigger, trigger. Everything will trigger that kid or trigger that kid. You think when a, if a kid that's been sexually molested, because I've got friends that were sexually, their children were sexually molested by somebody in Buckana, Virginia. You think that kid might be triggered if they see that kind of stuff? Or they're, somebody wants to read them something about, you know, you can have sex in the anus and I will tell you how about it at eight? Eight. Shame on us. And shame on us in Bodata County. And I don't know which one of y'all said the last time you had this meeting, how would we feel if we took the Bible out? Take it. She's took it anyways. You've taken everything out of our schools. We can't pray. We cannot, you know, if you do this and you talk about your faith, then you're the bad person today. I think that it is appalling. You sit there, you smile when somebody's talking about, you know, the land that we're going to do this to it and we're going to do that and the farmer's market. Well, when I grew up here, I grew up and it wasn't all that cool to be farm to table, but now it is. I grew up with a pigpen in the back of a Johnny House. But now we want to make it all fancy and put the rest of us over to the side. So y'all need to go home and think about what I said. And then by the way too, every single one of you, I ask you, go see the movie Sound of Freedom. Then maybe you'll see that this is not about whether or not it's one person telling this parent how to parent their child. It's about the child.
Thank you, Rhonda.
And the sexualization of our children. Thanks for listening.
Steve V. On deck is Alice D. Steve V. How about Alice D? Terry F. JR. Amsterdam. Kathy K. Finn Castle. Sabra B.
You all know I'm Sabra Breslin. I was here in June. I've lived in Bodata for the last 20 years. I'm a retired librarian. And I thank you all for listening to me again. I come to you as a member of the library community, as a person vehemently opposed to censorship. I've spoken to you before and repeating myself. I'm a parent. I am appalled that we're going to let no one under the age of 18 into the libraries unless they're accompanied by a parent. When's going to be that 16-year-old that brings a lawsuit saying, I could drive myself to the library. I want to check out Gender Queer. I want to check out some of these books. I'm curious. I want to know. My parents won't listen to me. I think I might be gay. I might be trans. I don't know. This is all new to me too. I'm 70. I, I'm just now learning about this stuff. I don't find it, I, I, I'm a parent. I don't think it's immoral. Or I don't think it's proper for any of you to tell me how to raise my children and tell me what they're allowed to read. I'm sorry. As a reference librarian and as a librarian responsible for collection development, I was trained to not judge a patron's inquiry or request. You want a book on guns, sex education, LGBTQ issues? Actually, that was before I, yeah, that wasn't really a thing back then. However, I have friends and relatives that are in that community. They never had books in their possession. They had to go underground to find books. Librarians are trained to assist you in finding that book, magazine or database that will answer your question. They have no hidden agenda, no ulterior motives in helping patrons. But I guess now if you look like you're under 13 or 18, they'll definitely ask your parent or guardian to make sure it's okay for you to buy a, bring up, you know, check out a book on guns, how to make them. How about building a bomb? Yeah. Yeah, that happens. I've been in a reference librarian and I've had that happen. Our public libraries are repositories of information on a wide variety of topics. Just as society and information changes, so the information in a library will change. And I am going to go over because every single one of you has as well. Believe it or not, accept it or not, the LGBTQ community is here and they have as much a right to read books that represent their point of view as anybody else in this room. Yes, there are some graphic imagery in some of these books. I don't like graphic novels. It's comic books. That's what my father always said. That's, that's the kiddie stuff. Don't read a graphic, you know, comic book. I look at graphic novels like that. But they're big now. Kids want to read that stuff or look at the pictures. Gender queer, I've read that. I've read Lawn Boy. You don't think it's about pedophilia? No, it's about a young man describing his transformation into thinking, he thought he was straight. Oh, he met a guy. He felt something for him. Oh my gosh, I think I might be gay. That's Lawn Boy. Gender queer, that's about a young woman who's not sure.
Ma'am, if you'll direct it toward the.
Okay.
And I think we're.
Last word. First Lady Laura Bush remarked in 2002, libraries allow children to ask questions about the world and find answers. And we've mentioned that here. And the wonderful thing is that once a child learns to use a library, the doors to learning are always open. Now, if y'all are worried about a book in a library, please start taking your smartphones away from your kids because they have the world in this phone.
Thank you.
If we can, Rebecca C. Ricky A. Glenda B.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Glenda B. and I'm from, oh, Glenda Buchanan, and I'm from the Buchanan district. Now this weekend at the Buchanan Theater, The Sound of Freedom was playing. I don't know if you went. It's going to play again Thursday night if anybody's interested. It's about a real life character, a homeland security agent who goes above and beyond his duty to rescue some children from sex trafficking. At the end of this fast-paced film, we learned that America is number one purveyor of child sex trafficking in the world, in the world. That's horrifying. Why don't we hear about that in the mainstream news? And it doesn't make me feel loud and proud like the little library book called The Rainbow Parade. It declares that the child who was watching the parade with her two moms and watched as naked people and men dressed up as women marched by and gyrated through the streets, she decided it was important to be loud and proud like the rest of the people. We have been talking with you since January about the explicit sexual imagery and graphic depictions of the Rainbow Collection of children's books found on the shelves in our libraries. We have told you about the fact that these books systematically undress the innocence of children and clothe them with new gender choices and graphic depictions, all geared towards sexualizing and reordering their thoughts and dress and speech. I don't have enough time in three minutes to lay this all out completely. But let me give you a few bullet points to help you connect the dots. Fact, the head of the American Library Association, as you've already heard, is a self-proclaimed Marxist lesbian. Fact, our own Bodata County Library Director was released from her last employment as a library branch manager amidst some controversy about whether or not to allow a drag queen story hour in her library. Fact, in June, the Gay Pride Month in the city of New York, drag queens marched through the street to the beat of, we're here, we're queer and we're coming for your children. We're here, we're queer and we're coming for your children. We're here. The Rainbow Collection, found in the children's section of our libraries, is part of the how they are coming for your children. Thank you for listening.
Let me go back to the agenda. And number 13. Vida.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again this month. So for our monthly updates, we continue to work on our schedules and for paving, the resurfacing contractors have been in Bodata. We have a few that are completed. They're still striping a few. As for the work orders, the first two on the list are still the same. We haven't got any response back for them yet. For the TE work order, for the change of the striping and lane assignment. For the TE work order for the change of the striping and lane assignments at Route 11 and 220 and 220 alternate, after review, they decided to leave that same. We get that request about... Once every six months, someone wants to change through right to a right-only. But we looked at it again. It's been about a year and a half and again, no changes. As for Route 681, Mary Alice Road, some requests to post a speed limit. Since it's very low volume and a very short length, the recommendation is to keep the speed, keep it unposted at this time. We have a listing of several land development projects on here. If you have any questions about those, we've issued 15 permits in the last month, 10 utility and five private entrances. We are doing contract mowing right now. They should be done. It says around July 31st. I think it'll be sometime this week. As for planned and routine maintenance, it's normal. Normal for this time of year, gravel roads. We're doing some mowing again, like I said, and we have had some trees down with the recent storms, so they're cleaning those up as we have them. We did have some recent flooding on some of the roads in the Buchanan area, so there's nothing damaged too severely. Again, we have patching and it's on some of the routes throughout the Troutville area. And again, Country Club has been paved and it's completed because I think they have to do some striping on it. I don't believe that's complete. Mr. Martin, I believe that you had asked me a few times about 154 Mountain Pass Road. That has not been ditched yet, but it is on schedule. They're aware of what's going on and they know the citizen there, so. I heard the citizen ask about Hillview and Hunt Ridge. Hunt Ridge is on the paving schedule for this year. It is, it's been pushed out a few times. We're doing a special mix design for that one. It's gonna be something a little bit new that we don't do in this area too much. But it is only intended to be from 460 to the Roanoke-Bodotat County line, so it'll stop at that intersection just before it changes to Hillview. I have spoken with that citizen before and unfortunately, it's not as easy as we'd like to make it to add a route, especially something that long to a paving schedule when it's already set because it's contracted out. We're not doing it ourselves. And there is a set amount of funding for that. In fact, sometimes we can add a route here and there every once in a while on a surface treatment schedule because we underrun our budgets. Unfortunately, for paving schedules, usually what happens is we end up having to cut routes at the end because we overrun materials or quantities. It's just the nature of the beast with those. Sometimes it takes a little bit more to actually smooth everything out. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions, Mr. Blub?
I have one thing I'd like for you to look at. It's on Route 460. It's in the eastbound lane. It's about 100 yards west of that new subdivision down there. I can't even think of the name of it, but... Anyway, you've got like three or four potholes right in the middle. Everything else looks smooth, but if you could, I'd appreciate if you took a look at that.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Good.
Um, Nace Road.
Yeah, and it's, I know I've told you the last few months it's on schedule. Buchanan's been hit harder by some of the storms than some of the others. They had some roads closed during some of those.
Right there where you make that left-hand turn, it's, there is zero shoulder. I mean, it's, and it's pretty significant. I drove through there this weekend. And it's pretty significant. I also just want to follow up on the question that you addressed from our citizen earlier, the Hunt Ridge. Did you get the answer that you were looking for? I mean, I don't... Do you understand what he's saying he's going to do? I just want to make sure the information is clear.
Go ahead.
From what I have was told by this gentleman and his superiors is that Hunt Ridge was gonna be start being paved the middle of July. We are now at the end of the July. I'm happy that it hasn't started yet because there's a big construction project going on with apartments and townhouses from Fraylin, and they have completely tore up Hunt Ridge. Now, Hunt Ridge connects to Hillview down at 220. If they're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to pave Hunt Ridge, I do not understand, do not understand why they cannot do the quarter mile that is in Bodotat to go out to 220. That just makes no financial sense whatsoever as a taxpayer to me. I don't care that it's on the schedule already. It doesn't need to be paved right now. Fraylin needs to fix his mess that he's created up there. You know, and why we as taxpayers have to even deal with this is just beyond me. And I want the portion of Bodotat County on Hillview to be included in the Hunt Ridge. And I can tell you this right now, and this is not a threat. If I have to do a GoFundMe page and put that Bodotat County and VDOT cannot work together, and I'm not putting this on Bodotat because I think that there's funds in Bodotat to get this section of the road done, then I will. Because this is just irresponsible financial mess that's going on with Hunt Ridge. It is, it's been a mess all year and nothing ever gets done. And it's even worse now than it was three months ago when it was just gravel. Whoever came in there and put the asphalt down in the ditches and the sinkholes and everything, it's worse than it was three months ago.
Thank you, too.
So if you're gonna do work, do quality work, and I really hope that the Bodotat section of that road gets paved. Thank you.
I'll have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy requests for an advertised for a planning commission public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a suit jacket on this time. I know last time I just had a polo on, so I'm improving as we go. Before you, it's a request to advertise for a planning commission public hearing to consider an amendment to the Bodotat County Comprehensive Plan that'll amend the future land use map number 37 that is associated with parcels identified as 87-159, 87-161A, and 87-161C. This is a owner-initiated petition for this change to the future land use map. The intent is to rezone a piece of property that's currently R1 to A1 to do some single-family lots. The property is identified as medium-density residential in the future land use map, and the intent is to bring this back down to a lower-density residential future land use map amendment.
Any questions for Mr. McCoy? So the the request is probably based on the fact that they want to do private well and septic?
Yes, sir. My understanding is the intent is to do private well and septic as well as private roads. I believe the expense to extend public water and sewer to this property is a little outside of the scope of the project and would not be financially possible.
How many lots are they talking about?
As many as 15, as few as six.
This is in behind the glebe?
Yes, sir. About 50 acres or so. It's three parcels.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, the staff's recommended that the board should refer the petitions to the planning commission. They'll have to be analyzed in detail. If I have a motion to do so.
I move.
I'll second that. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I know this next one might be a little bit longer. After this, if we could take a break.
Can I bring something up?
Yes.
Earlier action. This is relative to the resolution that we passed on the library collection. And we each read a certain portion. Come to my attention that the portion I read, I may have said 18 rather than 13. So let me read, let me read this particular citation. Just one and a half long. Whereas said... Excuse me. Whereas the Bodotat County Library requires that all children under age 13, is what our text says, must be accompanied by a responsible adult aged 18 or older while in the library facility. I may have said 18 instead of 13. And if I did, then I was wrong, but the printed version says 13.
Okay. Make noted if we could. Thank you. Hope there's no confusion. The policy that Billy and I had was up to 18, but it was written consent, and that is not a policy at present. It is just for consideration to the library board. So it is not a rule or mandated at all. It is just a recommendation. So that being said, they also don't have to be there with their child. It's a written consent. Okay, so let's go to 15, Request for Advertise for Public Hearing under Virginia PPA for purposes selecting top-ranked vendor for the public safety radio system.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Ankle. I'm the Emergency Communications Systems Manager. We, I'm pleased to announce we've made good progress in evaluating the RFP that was issued back in January. We did receive two proposals from two very reputable companies. And we've been working diligently on evaluating those proposals. They came from L3 Harris Corporation and Motorola Solutions. In partnership with our third-party consultant, Warcom Communications, the Emergency Communications Committee has been, like I say, working on reviewing all these proposals. We've had questions back and forth. The vendors have come in and made presentations. And then we recently received best and final numbers and proposals from both vendors, and that's what we are in the process of evaluating, and we anticipate will be done by August 11th. And we're requesting, per the PPA rules, to come back at, well, schedule a public hearing at the August 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting to announce the selected vendor from the Emergency Communications Committee.
So here we have them. Thank you, Mr. Ankle. Is there any questions that may ask from Mr. Ankle?
Curious about the two vendors.
Yes, sir.
And they are the dominant players, obviously, Harris and Motorola.
Yes, sir. For a system this size, there's really only two vendors. There are some other ones, but they're the two big ones.
Did we expect more than two?
No, sir.
They're that dominant. Okay, that's kind of what I thought, but I wouldn't...
It's a very specialized, you know, communication system, and there's only a couple handful of people that do it.
Any other questions? If none, this is a recommendation to allow an emergency communications committee to schedule a public hearing, August 22nd. Motion for approval of this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
We can take a short break unless you guys want to charge on.
I need a break?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Five minutes, five, 10-minute break.
Wish you...
Okay, well, we convene here. We can. I'm going to hit a few public comments. Timothy B.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Buchanan, and I reside in the Buchanan District. Not long ago, these meetings began with prayers for God's wisdom. Perhaps it's worth considering if there would not be less contention and better decisions made here if prayers to Almighty God replace the moment of silence. It's just a suggestion. Today, the United States is by far the world's number one producer and exporter of pornography. As a U.S. citizen and as a veteran, I'm ashamed of this fact. You should be too. Mr. Clinton, you said that you saw nothing wrong with four of the books that you examined, but what did you see right about them? What virtues are promoted? What does it benefit a child to be told that referring to the girl next door as she might be cruel? How much poison do you think it is safe to feed a child? Mr. Martin, you confided to me that you were disgusted by the images that you saw in some of these books and that children should not be exposed to them. You said there, but you said there was nothing you could do about it, but that's not true, is it? During these discussions, I've heard a dozen people defend the library director's right to advance her agenda. Mr. Lockaby warned of the risk of viewpoint suppression, and that argument might have merit if library pornography was a political viewpoint. It's not. Not once has anyone here produced any justification whatsoever for exposing children to pornographic images and false gender narratives, not once. Truth is the dividing line between good and evil, and this board has staked its claim on the wrong side of truth. The five of you may be willing to risk the health and welfare of children to a form of depravity that has no bottom. We're not. With adult leadership, this conflict could have been resolved months ago in any number of ways. The board has the authority, but chose to do nothing, impugning its own character and demonstrating contempt for the public. Now, you can pass a unanimous resolution supporting the library director and libraries. You can commend yourselves for your care and concern, but what you cannot do is make a political decision and call it right. And what you will not do is sweep this issue away with a morally obtuse resolution. If library leadership does not change, then county leadership must. Thank you.
Paulie Odell. Judy H. Perry B. Sally, yeah. Evelyn T. Alex S. Lee M.
Thank you for having me at six thirty when yours constituents can attend. That library resolution was a real cover your six masterpiece, so congratulations on that attorney vetted gutless wonder document. I strongly object to Bonita County Library's housing, cataloging, displaying, and circulating books that sexualize children, whether in the children's section or in the library at large. I've heard a lot of straw manning tonight from the side that wants to trash childhood innocence. I noticed seven to ten of those people brought library books with them tonight. Of the library books I saw, none of them were the listed children's explicit obscene pornographic books. I don't blame them for not wanting to be seen in public with these books. In Bonita, we don't want an atmosphere that's friendly to minor attracted persons. That's the politically correct term for pedophiles. From this board and in the newspaper, we've heard excuses on this issue such as we can't be censoring reading material. The county attorney told us it's legal. I'm sure there are more excuses. They come from the same place in the human heart that commits wrong. Then, when exposed and accused, obfuscates by trying to dispute fact as fundamental as the definition of the word is. We make people wait until sixteen to drive, eighteen to vote, and twenty-one to drink. People younger than those ages are not having rights denied. Those activities are age restricted because it's appropriate to do so. And we don't hand out booze at tax-funded food pantries or cars at public schools either. As in the issues of slavery and segregation, just because something is legal doesn't make it right. Laws are not the arbiters of what is moral in society. So this issue is only complicated when you're performing mental gymnastics in order to avoid your responsibility as a rational, accountable, adult member of a good society. You're either against these books in the libraries or you're for them. There is no middle ground. You cannot unring a bell. Once a child's innocence is violated, you cannot unviolate it. You need to show your spines, take the books out, fire the porn pushing director. You may not succeed, but your citizens want you to try. Not give us this dribble you gave us tonight. Thank you.
And D. Louis B.
Hey, I'm not going to add a ton to the discussion probably, but because you guys already ruled. Can I ask a question and just have you guys, because what is the current library status of someone who can walk in the library? Because I know it sounds like are y'all promoting, pushing the age limit up? It's where they have to have an adult with them. Is that what that is like proposing to be voted on?
Currently, it's thirteen.
Currently, it's thirteen. Are y'all proposing to up that by what you were saying?
All that's done is gone to the library board. I made it recommendations and moved.
Okay, so that's recommendations, I guess. Because you've already made kind of like the ruling and stuff on it. I'm kind of reiterating what they said, but not too much because I'm fully in support of First Amendment rights. I'm a Christian. I work at Fink Castle Baptist Church. It allows me to meet every week and pour into the lives of the kids, probably a hundred to two hundred kids every week. And I get to do that. It is very discouraging to realize the fact that they can still go in. And the damage of those kind of books, yes, they can. Everybody here that was here can say they can support what they believe, and I fully understand that. We are in America. They can do as they want. I also can do as I want. Thank goodness. And that is a right that we have. I would also argue and just say, please reconsider when people come back, because I know they will, and when people come back, please reconsider. Because the damage isn't necessarily what someone says and what they believe and what they're promoting is the fact of what the kids can see, whether the parents can actually get to them first or not. It's what they're going to see on the pictures if they so happenly open it and undo that book and look at it. That's what's going to do the damage. Many of you guys are males up on up here, and you know what that does. Images just don't go away, especially to kids. They're like sponges. That's why I teach them every week because they're sponges, and we got to teach them. We have to invest in these kids because they're our future. Please reconsider when people come back, even if you have to heighten the age limit, propose heightening the age limit even more. I know you say you may not be able to do but so much. But if you truly believe something is wrong, then please stand up for it. If you still believe something's wrong, please stand up for it still. So humbly, please take my suggestion. I appreciate that you guys still have time to listen to us, but please reconsider because the damage is not in what people believe necessarily. The damage is what these kids are going to see. And that's what we're really trying to look up against is to protect them because they are priceless and they're our future here. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Danny G. Danny G. Danny G.
I noticed no one's saying their address. I don't need to say my address tonight.
No, sir.
Okay. I didn't have time to read the new rules, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to address the Bonita County Board of Supervisors. Standing with me today are three individuals who are members of a group, including myself, called the Bonita Residents Against Child Exploitation. We have a letter for you. I'll read it. During the Board of Supervisors meeting on July the seventeenth, County Attorney Michael Lockaby presented a legal analysis regarding the ability of the board to remove obscene books for children and teenagers from our county libraries. We asked for some legal analysis of that presentation, and here is our summary. His presentation was an embarrassment. It appeared to consist mainly of talking points from the Pro Pornography American Library Association and a few historical Google searches. It was shoddy and incomplete to the point of malpractice. One wonders exactly whom he purports to represent. Lockaby claimed it began by claiming that the power to make changes to library policy rests with the Library Board of Trustees stating, "The Library Board continues to make the policies that the library staff implements. The Library Board has the power to make rules and set policies for the exercise of its authority, and this includes developing and implementing policies for the development and retention of books in the libraries." Really? According to the county website, the Library Board is only advisory and has no other powers. The Library Board's bylaws state trustees provide opinion and guidance to the library director. The Library Board certainly doesn't hire and fire any staff. In fact, all the power lies with the Board of Supervisors. The supervisors appoint the Library Board members, control the library funding, and control the hiring of all staff. Regarding litigation, Lockaby attempted to portray presenting pornography to children as a First Amendment right. He cherry picked a few of the ALA's favorite court cases and misrepresented them. For example, he talks at length about the U.S. Supreme Court nineteen eighty-two PICO case. He uses this to claim that books already on the shelves may not be removed because of their content. But the PICO case was not about obscenity. It was about mainstream books whose viewpoints, viewpoints, parents objected to. He brought up a well-known U.S. Supreme Court nineteen seventy-three Miller case, but only in a vague manner. Lockaby neglected to mention the important part. The court held that obscene materials do not enjoy First Amendment protection. Instead, Lockaby made the ridiculous suggestion that the parents use an obscure Virginia statute to sue the book publishers for selling these obscene books here. Why should parents have to do that? The truth is that the Bonita Library Staff purposely bought these books because they are obscene. They knew exactly what was in them. Lockaby brought up the U.S. Supreme Court two thousand and three United States versus American Library Association case, which he also misrepresents. He tries to paint it as promoting intellectual freedom and access to information. It's just the opposite. In two thousand, Congress had passed the Children's Internet Protection Act requiring public libraries to install filtering software on their computers to qualify for federal funding. The ALS, ALA sued claiming it violated the First Amendment. The Supreme Court strongly disagreed and ruled against the ALA. It was noted that libraries have wide discretion to exclude pornography and other sexually explicit material, and that a library's interest in protecting its minor patrons from harmful sexual materials is not only legitimate, but compelling. This ruling basically sets the standard for the rights of libraries to keep out pornography despite the continued protests and misinformation about the ALA.
Are you finished?
No, I'm not. We have we have broad information before this board, some have since January. We have never been afforded the opportunity to make a presentation to the board. And I respectfully ask that you allow me to continue and complete the reading of this letter.
Give you thirty seconds.
The ruling basically sets. I I'm going to stop. Charles, would you hand the letter to them? I hope that you'll read this letter. And I want to say I weep for Bonita County. Today is a sad day in Bonita County, and the people of Bonita County will will reap the consequence of what you five have done, all gleefully participating in. Two of you are gone. Three remain, and you will be gone next.
That concludes that. Next is number sixteen, Consider Resolution Authority Chief Deputy Treasurer. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. According to Virginia law, the treasurer of the county's signature must be on all checks, and the treasurer may designate a deputy with the governing body's concurrence to sign checks in the treasurer's absence, or should they be unable to sign? And so the county treasurer, Ms. Donna Booth, has asked your concurrence and your consideration of the resolution before you to authorize Mrs. Kelly Nicely, Chief Deputy Treasurer, to be able to sign checks in the absence of Treasurer Booth. And the treasurer's here. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to address him.
Any questions? Not, I like to make the motion of approval of the resolution authorizing Kelly Nicely, Chief Deputy Treasurer, to sign any county checks. Chief Deputy Treasurer to sign any county checks in this booth's absence. Second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Thank you. Mr. Lanford, discussion and consideration approval, AECOM proposal on historical building.
Good evening, members of the board. In your package, you have a proposal dated July twenty, twenty twenty-three from AECOM. This is work that has been ongoing with Historic Greenfield and recently with the Preservation of Historic Properties Commission as well. It actually started a while back with Historic Greenfield. We, the board authorized design work for a chimney rehabilitation that at, at the site across International Parkway. Because of the scope of that work, it's hard to find qualified folks interested in bidding it. And so the commission had a discussion around trying to expand the scope of a project in hopes of having interested bidders, which resulted in negotiations with AECOM. They, as, as, as a term contract engineer for us, engaged Doug Reed, who was a specialist in historic structures, to come down and perform an evaluation of those to assist AECOM and Hill Studio and in performing further work on the, on the properties. After he was first contacted by us, the Historic Properties Commission has interest in the McDonald Senior House that's located on Roanoke Cement Property and asked if we would also have Mr. Reed prepare a proposal for, for consideration to evaluate that structure and its ability to be relocated. And that is what you, you have in front of you tonight. Historic Properties Commission heard this on July twentieth and approved the, the scope. Historic Greenfield heard it on July eighteenth. They did not have a quorum at that meeting, though the majority of the members present were in, were in favor of moving forward. We would ask the board to authorize execution of the agreement contingent upon a final approval by a quorum of Historic Greenfield at their August meeting. Be happy to answer any questions. Historic Greenfield has funds in their budget to cover the costs for this work and Historic Property Commission's does as well in the current budget of year. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr.?
So, Steve, I'll, and, and Mr. Lanford, Mr. Clinton, the, Mr. Reed's work will be on all of those structures in that's listed.
Three over here and then one over on Catawba.
Then to make, yeah, okay. And that's what we're looking at there for the twenty-seven thousand. And then, then of course, the comments below were anything additional, that's how that would be handled.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Understanding the historical society, they have monetary to take care of this.
Historic Properties Commission, yes.
Okay, so there's money, there's money already budgeted and this is how it can be used.
Yes, sir.
Not, not a new request, but.
Yeah. Any, any further questions? If none, I can ask, asking for a recommending approval for this. Recommend an approval. I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion around two twenty, alternate two twenty corridor transportation analysis.
Yes, sir, I believe in, at your seat, you have a memo that was drafted this evening and wasn't ready in time to go with your agenda packet. Primarily a conversation that has been ongoing for about eighteen months or, or more about the possibility of engaging a transportation engineer to do an analysis of the two twenty, two twenty alternate corridor from its intersection with four sixty to International Parkway and how that may help with some of the, the challenges and transportation needs along that route. Primarily, the, we would recommend possibly doing this in phases, but having the first phase be from exit one fifty to Catawba Road or just pass the board Bodotat in some form or fashion. Prior to me coming to work here and since I've been to work here, we have submitted smart scale applications. And it's, you know, those, those applications have not scored well and haven't been funded for those identified transportation needs. We would recommend engaging one of the term engineering contract, engineering contractors that we have on board, specifically AECOM. Scott Hodge is probably one of the most respected transportation engineers in Virginia is doing work on the I eighty-one corridor currently. And Mark Jamison has joined that team recently. He's a retired city engineer who has quite a bit of experience with the TPO and Roanoke and also working on smart scale applications as well. What we're asking for tonight from you is, is the board interested in considering doing something like that? And would you like us to bring back a negotiated scope and fee for your consideration in August? We think there's value to, to having them on board. There's a lot of things occurring down there. And I think VDOT, there's been conversations with VDOT from the district level and the residency level. They provided some of the data from the work that they've done on, on projects there and they're supportive of the concept as well. So be happy to answer any questions you may have. No action necessary tonight, just to be a consensus that you'd like us to, to work on something along those lines and have it on your August agenda.
Any questions from the board?
So this is basically trying to get information and put together to make smart scale more reasonable request, I guess. I don't know.
I think, you know, part of the challenge with smart scale projects is if they don't score well, they don't score well. And they're, they typically don't improve in scoring. And so there's, and also there's a lot of change that's occurring, especially in that one fifty corridor with I eighty-one improvements going on all the way up to, you know, the, the intersection with Catawba. And there's conversations about pedestrian and other type of accommodations through that corridor. And so bringing all that together and having some folks assist us and work with VDOT on putting together what some smart scale applications that may be more successful than the, the current three that have been submitted.
I see.
And not a, not a criticism of the current three that have been submitted, but but once they're in queue, they typically don't. It, it's not like other funding programs where you sometimes rise because there's just not sufficient funding. Projects typically don't score well based on the criteria.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, I think, and we, I think we're all agree to have this negotiation, so that's fantastic. Thank you. Spindleton, Apex.
Thank you, Chairman, board members, thank you. Make this very short there. We have received plans. We have a very large package of information to unpack. And because of that, it does take some time to intake all of the information that we've received. But Rocky Forge and Apex have submitted a revision or an update. And so as we work to intake and process those, we'll kind of determine. You know, we assume that there are the revisions needed from the last set of plans, but until we can really dig into that, you know, that's, that's kind of where we are. And of course, we will utilize our independent consultants to assist us in the review as we have in the past. So we'll have more information likely for you at next month's update. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the continued updates. When, when you review these resubmitted plans, do you look only at the comments that were made or do you review the whole thing as a, as a package again?
Well, so there's well over ten different project numbers, subdivisions, two sets of plans, well over thousands of pages of information. So we will look to see what the changes are. But we do put an eye on every single page, you know, just to make sure that nothing has changed significantly.
Other agencies as well, like VDOT looks for their comments and.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some appointments, Rural Valley Transportation Plan Organization, RBT, TPO, elected representative appointment, Stephen Clinton and Billy Martin are eligible for reappointment. Without further questioning on that, I'd ask that we maintain Steve and Billy for that. If, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. And last, any board comments, any board member comments you have?
Board member.
All right. Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir.
For adjournment?
Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.